Good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Wednesday, December 13, 2017. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a citizen advisory group to the city council charged with making recommendations concerning land use plans, planning processes, and are on matters of plan implementation. Our regular meetings of the Planning and Zoning are quasi-judicial in nature and are recorded for record retention and minute transcription. Prior to this meeting, there was an Agenda clarification meeting held at 6:00. We have on our agenda this evening, and we are going to start with Agenda Item Number One, which is Roll Call and Disclosure of Conflict of Interest, Expartee Communication, and Site Visit. Aislinn, if you would call the roll, and if each Commission member would state their name, and what area they are from, and anything that they would need to disclose.
Jack Brennan?
My name is Jack Brennan. I live in the Johnny Creek area. I did make a site visit to Agenda Items Three and Four, and I have nothing else to report.
O'Connor?
My name is Sarah O'Connor. I live in the college neighborhood, and I made a site visit to Agenda Items Three and Four, and I have nothing else to report.
Julia Sanders?
My name is Julia Sanders. I live in the South Park area, and I have nothing further to report.
Chair Ryan Satterfield?
I'm Ryan Satterfield from the Highland area, and I have nothing to report. And then, we have a few members that are excused this evening. Our Agenda Item Number Two is Approval of Minutes. Commissioners, have you had a chance to review the minutes? Any discussion on the minutes, and/or any motions?
I'll motion to approve the minutes as written.
Very good.
Second?
Okay, so it's been motioned and seconded. Aislinn, will you call the vote?
O'Connor?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Three, Preliminary Platte, Breezy Point Division Number Three. Brandon Ratliff, represented by RMEs, has submitted a request to subdivide 4.48 acres, more or less, into 18 residential lots located south of West Quinn Road, east of Philbin Road, on extensions of Kinghorn Road and Brock Drive. The land is located within a residential medium-density, single-family zoning district. We could hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Mitchell Guerrero, RMEs, 600 East Oak here in Pocatello, Idaho, representing the applicant. The applicant had a conflict with graduation this evening, and so he was unable to attend, but I will be representing him, and he has several things that we need to discuss as we move along. I think, in general, we tried to present an overall plan of how this project could be developed, and you can see some gray in this area that the applicant believes will be happening at some point in the future. Because it's a fairly large phase, as we developed it, he decided, hey, I want to maybe break it into two phases, and so through that process, we came up with having to submit a couple of applications, so that's why we are where we are. But essentially, it's a fairly long extension of this, of Breezy Point. So, a little history on Breezy Point subdivision. It started in 2008, and I'm not sure if anybody here was on the Commission when that happened, but we came in with an early division that happened, you know, on this location, and then a second division that took a very long time to finish construction on. The economy kind of continued to go where it went, and so it took a very long time to get that developed. But you can see now, most of the lots that he has have been either built on or have homes started to be constructed on. It's a little bit different project than what we see normally here in Pocatello. Small lots, smaller houses, I guess. Normally, the projects you see are, you know, large lots, 10,000 square feet. These are half that size, essentially. So, it's a product that we need in this community. Certainly, it's where the majority of the homebuyers are, and he's meeting the needs of that. Most of this product has gone to Chubbuck and some of those areas, so it's a nice product for the city of Pocatello. Even with the smaller lot sizes, I think the minimum, and I have to apologize because I didn't separate out my statistics between Division Three and Division Four, but our smallest lot is 63, 50 square feet. The zone for residential medium-density, single-family is 5,000, so we're over 25% larger than what would be required by the zone. That precipitated some concerns, I guess, the lot sizes, whether or not we could fit homes on particular lots, and so we worked with staff and went through a couple of iterations and placed homes that you can see kind of on this. They're a little hard to see, but in red, and the red doesn't show up hardly at all, but there's homes, and I think maybe on your drawings you can see those better, but there's homes placed on some of the concerned lots. And so, just so there's no misunderstanding, those are existing homes that he has already built within the project, and that would be similar to what would be constructed in the future, in the future divisions. So, the total project is about 8.67 acres between the two phases. Again, I don't know exactly how they're divided between the two, but it consists of 34 total building lots. So, one of the things, this area that's located immediately north was originally part of the original master plan that we submitted in 2008. The neighbor to the north wanted to expand his horse ranching operations, or some of his residential type uses that he has there, and so he requested to purchase this lot from, or that piece of property from our owner, and he ended up selling that to him. That is important because this Kinghorn Road is part of the project. Some of you may have been here in 2015. This is the Breezy Apartment Project that was approved in early 2015 by this Commission, and then it was ultimately approved by council, and it has not been built yet, but it was originally approved, and some of the discussion items are related to this sewer line that comes down through there that feeds that, ultimately feeds that project. So, with Breezy Point Division Three, I think we've reviewed the staff report. Let me pull my staff report out. And I think, for the most part, Items One through 15 on the staff report are pre-standard. We don't have any issues with anything related to that. Item 16, I would just make a clarification, that on the earlier divisions, we prepared a modeling result, and modeling in this area based on the surrounding city pressures in this area are extremely high. They're higher than what DEQ would ask for in this area, and so, based on that, I think the city, the city water department's doing some things overall to correct those pressures, but our, the results of the model are going to show a system that has elevated pressures, and I believe that we modeled the entire system earlier, and I don't think much has changed since that earlier model. So, just that caveat on Item 17. Item 21, that talks about the cul-de-sac at the end of Brock Drive, and in fact, the staff report states, "The proposed cul-de-sac at the end of Brock Drive is not acceptable." So, I guess we want to know what the proposal is to change that, but I will say that if, in the newly adopted code, the subdivision ordinance, it allows, in Code Section 500.04.06, it allows cul-de-sacs that are accepted by the fire, by the fire department, or in the current fire code, which is, I think the city of Pocatello goes by the 2012 fire code. And I think I could bring up that, this is the, this is the code section in the fire code that deals with cul-de-sacs, and you can see this hammerhead, or that alternative is what is essentially proposed at that intersection. So, we have that 70-foot stub, and then a north, kind of a, this northern section, which essentially can be any length up to 150 feet without another cul-de-sac. So, that's what we have proposed there, and I believe it meets the code. I think they were suggesting maybe a temporary turnaround at the end of this, at the end of this street, and then maybe a private drive that goes to the north, which I think we could work through and make that acceptable. However, I would just state, you know, in terms of what's best for the community, is that really best? And I'll say, one of the, one of the issues is that, you know, there was some discussion as to whether or not this Brock Drive would continue on and connect to Cottage, and I think it could, at some point, connect through there, and that might be something that the developer to, basically, let me turn that north-south, but to the south, could potentially do at some point. But I think it's maybe unlikely, I guess, I would say, that that road would continue. There's a fairly substantial canal in this location, and this is a fairly small parcel, so this probably isn't going to want to connect across, based on the financial considerations. And we can't build that crossing because we don't necessarily own that property. We only go to the center line of the canal, and so constructing it at this point is not feasible. So, what we did is left a permanent solution there that meets the code. We provided a right-of-way to the south so that someone could, or at some point, if it wanted to connect, could be connected, and all you'd have to do is remove that section of curb and gutter and sidewalk, and it could extend on. So, again, we're open to options. I think that we were being very thoughtful in how we terminated that, and I would state further that, and I think where the master, where the requirement that comes up in the staff report, which is basically Number 23, for a temporary turnaround, comes, let's see if I can find it, from these Breezy Point approved plans, and I think in those, when we did, when Breezy Point Division One, it actually showed, well, actually, let me go to the layout. So, in, this was part of our original kind of master plan of that area, and I can open it up, and it shows, it showed a temporary, kind of a temporary turnaround at the end of that street. But you can see, excuse me, that that hammerhead configuration is basically the same. It hasn't changed. And I don't think my client was ever planning on building that crossing. I think the potential is there, that it could connect south and do that, but right now, he has multiple access points planned. We have two off of Philbin, there's a future one off of Quinn, which provides adequate circulation, also the Kinghorn Drive extension that would happen in the future. So, I think, again, that 21, 22, 23, I think we're open to how that could be configured. I would say that I believe that we probably have come up with a reasonable solution there that meets the code, and certainly, it is hard for us to anticipate things if we provide something that we believe meets the code, and then it's not acceptable per the code, then it's hard for us to know where to go and how to deal with things. So, I guess we need some advice on that. I believe I sent an email trying to resolve some of that ahead of this, but I haven't heard a response on that. So, all the other conditions as far as putting a fire hydrant on the division line, obviously, if the lines terminate, has to be terminated in a fire hydrant, we certainly understand that. And the sewer services, so the lot configuration has changed slightly since the sewer line went in, so initially, when the project was developed, the sewer line was run down Brock Drive and over to a connection point that was, you can see where that future road could be. So, we crossed the canal with the sewer line and tied it in, in that Cottage Estates subdivision. And the sewer line, the sewer services were placed, and you can kind of see them graced out in your drawing, and there's a, there's a couple of services that don't line up exactly right with the layout that's presently proposed, and so those will have to be adjusted, and I don't think that's too big of a deal. We, I think one has to be added, and a couple need to be abandoned, and that should handle everything. So, unless I want to talk about Breezy Point Division Four, I think that's pretty much it. If you want, I can give my spill on Four, and we can be done there.
Why don't we do that? Let's just go ahead and put them together.
Okay, so Breezy Point Four, again, is, I think we're pretty okay with all the, all the conditions up to Item Number 20, okay? So, so 20, it says, you know, provide an easement large enough for the sewer line, and that's that sewer line that we were talking about here. And we provided a 20-foot-wide sewer line easement. That's a pretty substantial easement. I'm not sure what the depths will, how the depths will work out as we design that. It may require one more manhole at the toe of the slope, potentially, but if you think about what's asked for in Item Number 20, which is essentially a one-to-one, horizontal to vertical, from toe, from top of pipe out, so you need a, you know, if you're looking at a trench, for instance, you know, you might have five feet on the bottom, and the normal buried depth for sewer is about 10 feet or so, and so we're talking a minimum easement of 25 feet to meet that requirement. So, that's a pretty, starts to get to be a pretty wide easement, and I'm not sure how the city deals with that on a normal basis, but I rarely see 25-foot-wide excavations to deal with 10-foot sewer. So, again, we want to do what's reasonable, and we don't want to create a situation where the city can't, can't deal with what we're proposing, but at the end of the day, we throw these blanket requirements on without really thinking about the ramifications or the implications of them, and it becomes difficult to deal with them in a, in a project. So, those two lots that we're showing there are, they're steep, and they're tight. That's why they asked or requested us to put a, to put a house on there, so that we could see that something can work there. So, the more easement we place there, the more difficult and less usable that gets placed there. I would dare say that, once that sewer line goes in, it's never going to be dug up again. We have the technology, there's pipe bursting technologies, there's things like that where those pipes, if they ever had to be replaced, which is very, 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 very unlikely that they would get replaced, they would be replaced without actually excavating the pipe. It would be done through one of those types of technologies. The, Item Number 21 requests an all-access road be placed along that, and that sounds good in theory, and you guys probably don't remember the Breezy Apartment Project here. And the reason why we're putting that sewer in is because that's kind of how we can sewer it without having to pump and do crazy things, and so that's, that's why the line is going down there. It's certainly not our preferred option for the line, but if I go back to, let's, let's just, hopefully the topography will kind of show here, and maybe you guys looked at the project, but as you come around Brock Drive there, there is a substantial grade difference between up here where Breezy Apartments is, and that's why, that's why this is kind of up on a top shelf there, and then this is a lower shelf here. So, there's a substantial grade. And putting an all-weather access road up this lot line is not going to be usable. Like, you can't drive to it, you're not going to be able to drive along it. That road would have to circle around or do whatever to get to it. Originally, we had shown that there would be an access point to this manhole through this project between two of the houses, and so they could get in there. We showed, I think, a little, some sidewalk-like tracks that they could drive the truck down and get access to that manhole. And from that point, you could get access to the other, other manhole from the lower, from Brock Drive. So, you know, in theory, that all-access road sounds good. This, this line wouldn't be used until the Apartment Project or the Fourplex Project was constructed anyway, and so there wouldn't be need to access it until, you know, until this line was connected in, and then I believe the access would be provided from there, if, you know, if that's acceptable. So, one of the other things, and if you look at the layout, again, we, we just showed the curbside sidewalk along this area. We'd request that you guys see the logic in that, something that I requested as well. We have grade in this location, and the more you push everything out, the more of those houses get into that grade and become more difficult to build. So, I think, other than that, I think we're pretty clear with most of it. I'm sure staff will have some comments relative to my comments, and so I answer questions if you guys have any, and if not, I ask that you approve the project with the deviations that I've highlighted.
Very good. I've got just one question here, and so in the third division, I guess it is, we discussed Brock Drive and how it ends there, and then Item Number 21 on how that, staff is saying that that's not acceptable. Can you address the elevation difference between the canal and Brock Drive itself, and if it were to go through, do you feel like there's anything in the current design as it is right now that would inhibit it from going through?
We haven't gotten to the detail of the design. Our intent wasn't really to design the crossing, but there's been some conditions, I guess, to design the crossing. That's fine, we can do that. But, no, the road can elevate enough to cross.
To make it work.
Yeah. I mean, however, we haven't worked through the details of the design or anything like that, but certainly, it's probably going to need to start raising at this, you know, at the location of the hammerhead, or however, whatever we end up with there, and then it could certainly get up to a grade that would be adequate to cross.
Okay. And you would be okay with doing that?
Yeah, so we would elevate this side to that design.
And then leave it.
And then leave it.
Very good. Any other questions, Julia?
So, back to Division Four, Item 21, that all-access, all-weather access road. Do you have any idea of what the grade of that road might be, that slope?
I'd guess it's 20%. I mean, it's a fairly steep slope. I don't know for sure what it is. I think we could, I could probably figure it here if you want. It's steep. I mean, it's way steeper than, you know, normally, typical city codes would require us, on any road, to be 10%, and it's not, it's well beyond that, as far as being able to meet that requirement.
So, on that note then, how would that slope affect the homes that would be right around that corner?
Well, what they're going to end up having to do is use a home, like a split-level-type home, to take up some of the grade, or maybe some other type of design, and then there's going to be some retaining walls associated with that construction. That's how that's going to work. And some of that material has been moved. Again, if you've gone out and looked at it, my client, over the last few years, has kind of been working on that slope in anticipation of this project, and so some of the material has been removed out of there, but again, it's still, you know, what's happened is, he's steepening the slope to make room for the home, so it's getting steeper than even what it would have been naturally, or what it is naturally.
On that same note, to access that upper manhole from the Apartment subdivision, I agree, is probably the best access to it. Do you know, would your client be willing to grant some type of easement through there for this current time until that gets developed out to access it? Is that something?
I suppose, but again, what I envision this is going to be potentially dry stuff. We're showing connections on there, but those connections could be put off the other line so that it would just be dry. We can do whatever. I mean, an easement is fine, it's not that big of a deal. Again, we'll do what makes sense, I guess, so the city can maintain it and still, hopefully, be able to accommodate what we're proposing there.
Any other questions for Mitch?
You said previously that there was a preliminary plat already done for those apartments, but that they haven't been built because of...
Basically, economics. So, the, my client was unable to get financing for the project, or was in a position where he couldn't obtain financing at that time for the project. It's more than preliminary. We actually have final design plans, final plat, everything was put together, and then it was put on hold for a period of time, just because, you know, financing at that time was not, wasn't, wasn't available, I guess.
So, is the plan now to kind of build it all?
No, he's not going to build the apartments yet, so that'll kind, we'll have to bring that back through, get it re-approved, and he's not going to construct those apartments. They're on hold for a period, you know, for a while, but yeah, ultimately, you know, his intent is to build them, but it's going to be sometime down the line.
Okay.
Very good. All right, thank you, Mitch. Now, if we could hear from staff, Carl, and I guess a little, I'm just going to give a little clarification here for the minutes. We are going to kind of go ahead and discuss Agenda Items Number Three and Four together, Number Four being the preliminary plat for Breezy Point Division Number Four, which is Brandon Ratliff and Kurt Davis submitting to subdivide 4.19 acres into 16 residential lots located south of West Quinn Road and east of Philbin Road. And since they are so interrelated, we'll kind of discuss those together, so.
Can I ask you a question? How is that going to come out, or we have to do the motion and move to your two Agenda Items?
We can either make a motion separately for each one.
I think that's going to be the best.
Yeah.
Can we also, can we stick to one, so I don't have to bounce back and forth, I'll be done with the page?
Okay. Okay. So, you're saying, okay, and so we can, we can re-discuss or re-bring up...
Summarize for me?
Yes, Number Four, so that's fine. Okay, Carl.
Good evening, Commission. Carl Anderson, Senior Planner, for the record. And so if it works for the Commission and for Aislinn, I can go through staff's comments on Division Three, address any questions you might have, and then move on to Number Four.
Very good. Sounds good.
So, before you, for consideration, you have a preliminary plat for Breezy Point Division Number Three. The application... The application has been submitted by Brandon Ratliff and Kurt Davis and represented by Mitch Greer, Rock Mountain Engineering, and surveying. The subject property is approximately 4.48 acres of land containing 18 total residential lots. The property is zoned as residential medium density, single-family. The requirement for a single-family home in the RMS zoning district is 5,000 square feet. And the smallest lot proposed is 6,229 square feet. Public Works Department has reviewed the preliminary plat application and estimated conditions, one through seven, or one through 27 rather, as we have discussed in Exhibit One. And they are attached to the staff report. Any questions on, staff has reviewed the application. No comments been received and staff recommends approval with the conditions attached to the staff report.
Okay. Are there questions that we want to discuss on Three prior to going into Four?
Yeah, can you address the cul-de-sac and cottage avenue intersection?
Yes, Merrill Quell is here from the Public Works Department. He can answer the question.
Commissioner Merrill Quell, Public Works Development Engineer for the City of Pocatello. I will address the, for Division Three, if I could go through and, and I will get to the question of the cul-de-sac, but I'd like to, if you'd give me the liberty to start with and try to cover Mitch's questions in the same order that he did as we come through. And I hope I get some notes and then I'll get to your question if I could take that liberty, please.
Yep.
Okay. Number 16 was the water pressure issue. And that is correct. However, we still need the water model. It will show that for each, each phase that we have. So we have that DEQ, the Department of Environmental Quality. The city has already gone through that. We have a pressure waiver in place now that covers that, that area in a blanket thing for, for our pressure waiver issues and stuff. So we've resolved that with DEQ. So, if you, there, so the answer to that. Twenty-one, the extension of Brock Drive. What we, what we are, and Mitch is right, if that's what he's, if they're planning on doing is on a preliminary plat with no elevations and, and nothing there, it's kind of hard for us to understand. We never did look at it as an acceptable for the Fire Department regulations. We looked at that as that was to extend sometime into the future. And at this time, it needs to be designed and put in to the point that we can get up and over the Old Larry Canal. I think that's which one that is. So that it can, to, to make that connection up and over. And there is some elevations there said, and if that's there. So we're looking to see the design and implementation up so that that can continue on and over that connection. That's why the temporary, because that's going to end up with a temporary turnaround at the end until that can, can extend in. And the, and then as he, as he made mention too of the, for the, the drive that we've asked for, if I can see which one that is. I forgot. I believe that is 24. Thank you, the shared driveway. And the way we've looked at that is that that, the reason why it's not an acceptable turnaround is looking at the public interest and so forth for that length of a roadway going back into two homes, that that needs to be just a, an area for a, for a private, private drive to those two lots where that's not going to be a road to going anywhere and that, and then where that road is to extend over. We're just through the notes, asking for that clarification and so that we have that level of detail when it gets to the final so that we're not bringing that up in the final after they've done so much work and now we've got to go back and maybe redo work and that. So we're trying to give that direction through, through those notes at this time. And then that way, we can extend the water main, that direction and so forth too. In the original design of, when they put in the sewer in, we did obtain through there with the help of the developer, a 20, or a 50-foot easement that goes there and, for the sewer. And then it's 50-foot for the purpose of a roadway through there in the future. And that's why it was that wide, wide. Let's go back in. Commissioner O'Connor, that answer your question on the cul-de-sac or do you need more question, more clarification?
Well, if they don't extend the road over to Cottage, but they still have to get all the sewer.
The sewer's already there. The sewer was placed at the original phase of the development. That was the closest sewer that was accessible at the time and economically feasible to, to extend the sewer over. So it does already extend through there and it is existing.
Okay, I just didn't see these green lines on the...
Yeah, the, the existing are probably grayed out. They probably have the line, it's just there, but it's gray.
Oh, okay.
Typically, so.
So Merrill, let me ask you, on their preliminary plat at the end of Brock, they are showing curb and gutter and sidewalk, but what you're saying is that that doesn't need to go in like that at all. And it can just show the end of a road as if it were to eventually extend over the canal.
And with that temporary turnaround that we've constructed in that at the end, because eventually it will go over and there's no sense in putting that in at that time.
Right.
I don't know how else to do that because the, the layout, to have that much road going back to lots seven and eight, you know, we don't want that, that in there either because of the area. Maybe, maybe if that, I don't know if there's a way to shorten that up so it's physically just the 70 feet to turn around and then the private drive off the end of that maybe, if you still want the turn.
I'd rather just do the, we're suggesting, the driveway and then...
And then the temporary turnaround at the end. So that's what we're asking, asking for so that that can do that. We're not asking for the developer to, to put in that road off-site. That's going to have to come at a later date.
So, do I understand this, that if, if they take into account getting over the canal, they designed something which would affect those two lots, that this turnaround like it is shown is acceptable? If the Fire Department accepted, would it be?
Well, it's, it's not the Fire Department that's, that's part of it, the acceptable turnaround. The other is having an extra 70 to 100 feet of, of maintenance for not being able to, for the street department, for instance, and to be able to put the snow up in their driveway and, and the maintenance and the added cost for that infrastructure that's there.
So you want to shorten?
If we shortened it, but according to what Mitch is saying there for the turnaround, they'd rather just run the, the curb and gutter straight across, do the curb cut, similar to what they probably did at, up on Vista and a couple of places for some of the flag lots that's up there. And it's just a, it's an easement that goes back for them for their driveway. That's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, that section would be just a shared driveway.
It'd just be a shared driveway to those two lots. Either an easement considered for both of them or 20 feet on each side. I think that's what they did up at, on Vista. One of the last ones we did similar to this was 20-foot on each side. And they had their own, because if something happened with their sewer or something, they were able to access back to, to both lots on, independently if they had to. And then an easement that overlapped on both of them, I think.
So Jack, are you asking about that on Lot Seven and Eight at the top there? Or are you asking about this?
Well, to me, and this is really confusing, but it's Lot Seven, as I understand it, lot three.
So this is Lot Seven, Lot Three.
That lot there would have to be graded. And the one across the street, that's got to be graded.
Lot Nine of Block Two.
Yeah, if there's a design, it has to get over. That's why I think...
So I think Merrill's looking at the other determination.
Well, I'm looking at both of them, but as far as the, the design to get over that canal goes, then that's, that should be done so that Lot Seven and Nine can be graded properly.
Right, those Lot Sevens and Nines, yes, that is correct.
Okay. But I guess my, my question still is, from what Mr. Greer presented, this configuration is acceptable under the fire code for a turnaround, for a fire truck? Is that right, Mr. Greer?
So an additional turnaround wouldn't be necessary? Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, that's the way I'm looking at it.
Well, what we're saying is that, that roadway that you're seeing the T's off, that's right, I'm going to forget that area. There, this, this, this area right here?
Yeah.
That will go away. That will be a private driveway.
Oh, so the city wouldn't have to maintain it?
So the city will not have to maintain it. That goes away. And then right here, at the end, right here, will be a temporary turn, the temporary turnaround style. But this will be, from here to here, will be straight grade, curb and gutter that'll go across there. That radius won't be there. This will not be a road.
Okay.
Or the turnaround. That'll be that driveway.
That clarifies it, thank you. Any?
So then, does that road eventually, in the tent from, from day one with this project up here, from the Phase One, was, this road was going to continue over and tie into Cottage?
I'm just having trouble, I guess, visualizing if the, if the road goes away, that section of road goes away, I guess I'm having a hard time visualizing what the turnaround's going to look like.
So Jack, it would just sit at the end here and go like that? And then they can pull up in there and turn around? And they would just do it to the standard, Fire Department standard that they're allowed for?
On the grade of the...
Yeah, they would have to flatten, they would come up, flatten out as if they were going over the canal and have a turnaround area there.
That, that would be correct. And it would meet the department, the Fire Department standards as what Mitch had shown right there.
Yes.
Right there at the end, without curb and gutter or anything around it.
Okay.
Because that will eventually go away when the road extends.
All right, any more questions for Merrill?
On that one?
On that one.
Did we answer everybody's questions in your seat, Mitch?
So, we were talking previously about the slope and the split-level homes, the retaining walls being built.
And that's on Phase Four.
Yeah, let's have Carl.
So that we can keep the record straight.
So I think that's all for Three that we had. So Carl, if you want to come on Four and give us a presentation there.
Thank you. Do I need to state the name for the record again? Carl Anderson. So, the second application that we have before you is Breezy Point, Division Four. Similar to Division Three, it is zoned as RMS zoning, which requires a 5,000 square foot requirement for the lot size. The applicant is proposing 16 residential lots with the smallest lot being 6,152 square feet. Staff has reviewed the applicant, application and recommends approval with the attached conditions including Exhibit One and items outlined by Public Works Department. I'm happy to stand for any questions that the Commission may have. Merrill Quell, Public Works Department is also here to answer any questions pertaining to Public Works Department.
Any questions for Carl? I think we have some for Merrill though, if you could come forward. Thank you, Carl.
Okay, I would like to see, kind of take the same liberty and just give a quick report on the, what I jotted down.
Perfect, yep.
And then, and then we can go there, so. Thank you. One thing I forgot to state in the last one is that Mr. Greer had indicated that an email was sent for the turnarounds and stuff. We, I did not receive one, so we need to go look and see what happened to that and stuff. So that was probably why some of this didn't get resolved ahead of time, is I was unaware of them. We did receive a letter from Mr. Greer on December Fourth, that covered some of the questions that he had concerning some changes that we had done. And he addressed all of those in, in that letter and there. So, so I think we started with number 20 was the, based on the existing topography and the sewer easement. And that is correct. Those sewers, and we've put that into our standards and, and started utilizing the easements to try to maintain sewers or water. And if they are deeper, and especially on these hillsides, that the easement may have to be wider. And as you can see on the, how do we get back to your other picture? Is it on, right there? Yeah. And we just need to go to the other end. That's good, that's good. What, what we look at is, and Mr. Greer's right, when, when he says, you know, technology's changing. We may have pipe bursting, we have other slip lining, we've got cured and placed pipe and stuff for, for different applications for these. However, there are times that we may have to be in there to, to dig, whether it's a point load or a plug or there's something else. It's not uncommon for something like this, especially with manholes off to the side in these areas, to, to have the, the line full of rocks because they just migrate there somehow. I'm not sure how they get there, but we just had a subdivision that, very similar situation on Cercini Court as we're looking at and one side. You know, it's out in the middle of nowhere and everything, but that manhole and everything is clear full of rocks that is eight-inch, 10-inch minus and had to be in and cleaned out. So, may not be uncommon when we look at maintenance on these lines, that if something like that happens or different things, we may be in digging between those two homes. And we need to make sure that we have adequate distance in there. When we're talking about the slope plus the depth, plus the house is that close and that, that easement may have to be bigger than our minimum as a 20-foot. And even on flat ground, it is very difficult, you know, just on a, for a 20-foot easement to be able to get in with a truck and an excavator at times. So it has a little bit more on the, there. So we're looking at the, the application of, of maintenance of something else that may happen and, and does happen in other areas of towns where we have easements. And we're trying to accommodate for those learned lessons now, so. So that's, that's the reason why the easement's a little wider. The other thing along when we're talking about the access road, when we talk about the access road and the note that you see there, it, it could come off of Quinn or it could come off of the bottom, we've, in the note. And the access road is so that we can get to that manhole. Because we're finding that, again, maintenance issues and that, we need to be able to get those trucks to, and, and equipment over the manholes, all the manholes, whether they're in the slopes and stuff. And looking at this, we were looking at how the reasons we need access now is if we have those two homes and the way they're configured now is they go to this line. So we're going to have, as mentioned, not a dry line on the bottom end if those houses are, if that's the configuration that's shown and remains, that we will have to be able to be into that line to, to figure that out. And at times, we may not be able to get whatever's lodged or... And at times, we may not be able to get whatever's lodged, or whatever's in there, we need to be able to go one direction or the other, and to work whatever the situation is from both ends. We might not necessarily be able to get it from one end, where the jet truck, the type of equipment we have, will be able to break it loose or lodge it, because of the way it's, it's stuck in there, whether it's a, even a two-by-four from construction that sits there. And we've had that happen. And from the home building and that, somehow we get a, a three-foot section of two-by-four that gets jammed in there, and you can't get it out one direction, but the other direction you can go in and it pops right out. So, that, we're asking for that. And now, with what's being said there, if, if we come off of Quinn, we need to make sure that we've got access there, if those lines remain on there. The, the question that, that was brought up is, and hopefully we can address those through the details, then, if that line is, is to be there, if we're gonna have retaining walls in that area, again, to be sure that we can figure out what we're doing with that line, and how we're taking care of that line, if that has to be with, with the topography and the, the retaining walls along the backside of that, we need to make sure that we're addressing that. Again, we're, the last, within the last couple of years, several things has come to our attention on the engineering side, and we're really taking a hard look at the longevity of the maintenance, and to be able to get in and take care of the lines, preserve the easements, so that people aren't coming in and planting trees, cause they don't know there's an easement there and that, they just think it, it is part of their yard, but they'll put trees and obstructions, utility boxes, different things that happen there, and that restrict us from entering those easements and stuff too. So we need to, we're taking a hard look at, at that, and making sure we're preserving In all weather, it's kind of a gravelled area, you know, is, is what we've, there, we're not asking for the asphalt or pavement, so. I was trying to listen, did you address the planter strip?
He did.
I didn't think you said anything.
He requested that it stay.
Okay, sorry, we were, Carl and I were answering each other's another question, and I, I missed a few minutes of the discussion, so I apologize. On the planter strip issue, I would like it to be consistent, and the issue with the planter strip is, we're wondering too, is maybe, maybe a little bit different design on that bulbed-out area and that, and could pull it back down this direction, possibly so that that could accommodate that planter strip and keep that consistent throughout the, throughout the subdivision and, and there. So, maybe look at some other designs. That would maybe pull it, the right-of-way changes a little bit different through there and that, that might pull those houses, I doubt it, it's pretty tight, the way they've got configured in there. But to be able to, to pull that down a little, and, and not push that back, those homes back into the bank as far too, cause it is steep topography through there. That may, maybe look at that, and I'm guessing they've probably already looked at some of that already, but there might be some other options there. I know economics plays into this, designs and stuff a lot, and they try to optimize everything, but with the width of the needed possibly of that easement and that, maybe, maybe one of those lots need to, doesn't, doesn't need to be placed in there. I know they try to optimize stuff and that, so maybe we need to look at some of this as an option to, in those particular areas, maybe the density isn't as great there, and the sewers realigned a little bit, and, and get one home instead of two in there, so. Okay, that's all the notes I had. I don't know if that answered your question.
So I've got a couple of questions for you, Merrill. Coming back to that sewer line, if they do design it to be a dry line, what is the city's, how comfortable is the city with that, with the easement situation and whatnot? Does that change?
The easement for the depth still stays the same.
Okay.
The, and then to dress with retaining wall, if that's the case. The, the roadway, we just need to make sure it's clear then, if the easement is coming in, as we heard a little bit later, that it's still down the roadways before the apartments come in, which would be probably the logical access, and has been pointed out, to come into there, that that is assured, and we don't lose track of that, so that we can still get that access to that manhole at that phase. And then, it could happen at that phase, because it's a, it is truly a dry line at that point, as far as, as far as the, having to maintain the services from those homes.
And then, on item 22 with the planter strip, for the section that's called out there of the Design Principles and Standards, are there any exceptions for planter strips? Talk a little bit about what the planter strips do, and why this is a big deal there.
A lot of the, there's, there's several things that the planter strips do accomplish. One is, it helps with the ADA, Americans with Disability Act regulations, as far as obstructions, the clear zones that they have. I think these, these guys have their own individual mailboxes out there, like, do they have mailbox units? I can't remember. We try to have mailbox units where we can. That's one of the things that their driveways, when we get into the topography and that, the driveway cross slopes have to be with their 2% where the sidewalks are. So when the planter strip's there, and you have a driveway with the six-inch curb and that, you can come up from the road, it can go greater than 2% through the planter stripped area for the approach, and then the 2% for the sidewalk, and then, and then match in. So, it, it makes things, life a lot easier when you're dealing with that, versus trying to shove out, have the curb and gutter, you know, the six-foot wings versus the shorter wings. And, and again, to be uniform throughout is, is always good, if we can try to do that. But not necessarily there. So, they always say, you know, another reason for this is, kinda gives a buffer between the traveling public and, and the vehicles. And it's been shown that the comfort level there is, is better. I know this is a 25 mile an hour, probably less, being residential and that, and governed by the residents through there, but there's that, there's that comfort, and that's why the city tries to have the, the requirements for a planter strip. Snow removal, when we have the heavier snows, and when we plow from curb to curb, it gives it an area there, we're not putting the snow clear all over the sidewalk, so that the residents are shoveling, you know, twice, basically. And, you know, and we have the ongoing joke at times, cause they, you know, we have the ordinances not to blow it into the road, but there are those that do, you know, and shovel it out of the road, then the plows come by and put it back in the sidewalk, and it's just a never-ending story, but there's that, so. There, there are those reasons, and that's one, what we're looking at is that.
Okay. Other questions for Merrill? All right, thank you, Merrill. Are there other questions that need to be asked, that anybody has? Yes, yeah.
Mitchell Greer, again, I think I, for the most part, agree with, with everything that Merrill said. One thing I would say is that I'm, I'm a proponent of landscape strips, and we put them almost throughout the whole project. There's three lots that are affected that we would ask for that waiver on. And this commission and the council numerous times has waived the planter strip through the entire project, when grade becomes a concern. And so, I would just ask that, again, let's be considerate, we're trying to, we're trying to make this project, as Merrill mentioned, as economically feasible as possible. I know it's hard to believe, but these developers aren't getting rich on these projects, they really aren't. They, every, every lot, every advantage counts and poker tell 'em, it is not a wealth of money. And the market that he's in, you know, losing a lot is a big deal. It, it can be the difference between success and failure. That's how tight the margins are in this stuff. And, and people think that these, these projects are very, very, very profitable, and, and some are, but for the most part, most people are just scratching out a living doing this, this development. It's not, it's not huge margins, and so, you know, we are looking for every advantage we can. That waiver of the, of the planter strip in this location helps us a lot. And I, I'll tell you, I know Merrill is concerned about the, the, the plowing, and we're, we're concerned about that, and cognizant of that, but I can tell you that I live on a similar bulb in my neighborhood, exactly the same situation like this. I've lived there three, four years now, through three winters, we had a pretty heavy winter last winter, and the, the street department never one time plowed the bulb. They plow the street, the bulb doesn't get plowed. It's snow storage, the bulb becomes snow storage. And so, a lot of times, I, you know, I have to clear out a path to get to my, to get to my driveway through that bulb. So, it, it is, you know, it, it, snow storage is a concern, but I don't think the way the streets get plowed, it's necessarily really that big of a concern, these bulbs, like on a, on a through street like this. So, anyway.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, let's, let's take this, starting with Division Three then, and any You know, I kinda see Division Three pretty cut and dry at this point, I think that we've kinda figured out how the street ends work and, and-
Yeah, and with changing that to a driveway.
Seems like everybody's kinda on the same page there. And so, with, with that, Agenda Item Number Three, I would entertain a motion, if anybody's supporting.
I move that we approve the preliminary plat for Breezy Point, Division Three, with Exhibit One. I think we've addressed all of the changes in that, so I think that should do it.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Eastland, would you call the vote?
Brennan?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
O'Carroll?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes. Okay, now, for Breezy Point, Division Four, which is Agenda Item Number Four, to me, this one's a little more complicated. I see kinda two main issues that we've got here, the first being with the easements for that sewer line, and then the second being with the planter strip. I'm, I'm very familiar with the number of subdivisions that don't have that planter strip. I tend to agree with what Mitch has said about the way that plowing has worked. I also look at that, and as you look at driveway configurations, it seems to me like that's all going to be paved anyway, in, in some sense, it's going to turn into driveway access, or, or something. I'm, I'm having a hard time seeing what the planter strip is going to benefit in those areas, but I would certainly like to hear what the commissioners think.
I'll be honest, lots five and six are hurting my head. I mean, that's just feeling a little out of my depth. I see both sides, I mean, I understand the city, and I understand what the developer says. I mean, I don't think the planter strip is a huge deal, like, to stop the project.
I don't have a big problem with the planter strip.
No.
With the planter strip going in, or with it coming out?
With it coming out.
Okay.
What I do have a problem with, however, is the sewer-
Yeah.
-situation. I, I have a good friend who's just twice in the last two weeks had her basement filled with sewage. It's kind of a hot point with me right now. And you just, and everybody's pointing fingers at everybody else, who's to blame, da-da-da-da. It's a big deal, and I think this is a stopper for me, the sewers situation.
So my understanding is, right now, that easement is showing that it's a 20-foot easement. Clarification, did I hear that in order to meet the standard, it would need to be how wide?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five? So, five more feet.
So that would narrow your house even more, right?
I, again, we haven't designed it yet, so I don't know how wide it would need to be. And, and it may require, there, there's room there for, you know, probably another 10 feet in there, if we need to. But it's gonna be based on the depth of the sewer at that, that, how it goes through there. So, without having the design yet, I can't say for sure how wide it needs to be, but I, what I said was, on a normal sewer, that's 10 feet, it's gonna need to be 25 feet wide, that, that access. And I, I think that's the minimum it would have to be, so it would go up from there.
So I think there's a number of ways that we can approach this as a commission. Obviously, it's a, it is a concern, and if there are other thoughts on things there, or if it's just something that we feel like, where we don't have a full design, we don't necessarily know what it is. Other thoughts on that easement?
I just can't, in good conscience, approve this with what we've seen, what we see here right now. But that's just my opinion.
I mean, so, the understanding would then be, Merrill, so the 20-foot easement that is shown in there, even if they do it at a normal depth, that wouldn't work? Or is there a way to design it with a-
In our manual, what we've done is, when we get into easements, and particularly in different topography, we actually need to be looking at this. And this triggers with the topography and that, of what we're saying. If this was on flat ground, different things, and we can isolate and that, may have a little bit different issue there. My question is, for Commissioner Brennan then, is that, is, I think I heard Mr. Greer say that it could be redesigned to take those two services off there, so then it would just be a transmission line from the top of the hill to the bottom of the hill. And I don't know if that changes that, or if that still gives you the issues you're talking about, where those lines would be removed. But I thought I'd heard that that could be happening from this design. And that might, that might take care of that part of the issue, where it's just a conveyance from the top to the bottom with no line, service lines on it, to where we can't maintain it, is, is adequately. So, I don't know.
Well, I, I still think somebody's gotta design this.
Right.
I hate to put that expense on the developer at this point, but at some point, it's gonna have to be developed, or that design-
Right.
...is gonna have to be developed, and then I would, then the city's gonna have to say, "Yeah, that's okay too."
Right. And that's why, that's why the notes are written the way it is, for the size of the easement. Because, I mean, what, off that side of that hill, if the sewer's able to be only five foot deep to come down, you know, but then you come down and flatten, I mean, maybe there needs to be another intermediate manhole in there through the design, is when- design is when Mr. Greer's looking at that. That might be some other options or different things. So, if that happens, so that with those transition points, that, that might be what needs to happen and then the sewer's not as deep and then the easement doesn't have to be as wide too. So, there's, there's some different criteria that needs to be looked at during the design process. And that's why the notes are written there. It's written big enough to, so that say, here's the criteria, let's see, you know, work within that criteria.
Mitch, can you address that?
I just want to say something. That line is not benefiting this project, right? And so, we're asking for approval of Breezy Point. That's for a future development. We're trying to get the line installed so that it can accommodate the, the future project without a lift station and, and a bunch, which is a huge, you know, another complication that the city likes to avoid. That's why we ran the sewer under the canal and did a bunch of stuff when we started the first division. So, again, it's not, I don't see why, it's necessarily important that we deny or not vote for this project because of that line because it's not for this project. That's for, we're trying to get that put in so that we can service another area in the future or one that we actually got approved earlier, but that's, that's what that line is related to. And we're attempting to, to meet the standards. You know, what I said was on the access, I think I was misinterpreting that access. I think that I was interpreting that they wanted access all the way along the line. And I think as long as it's just access to the manholes, it's not going to be that big of a deal to provide that access. And we may have to have an intermediate point. Like I said, there may have to be an intermediate manhole below at the toe of the slope, but, and, and our intent is to design it. You know, we want to get it in and get it built and be able to plan what happens there so that it meets what the city needs and we can still build a house there and, and make it, make it function. That, that's the intent. That's why we're, that's why we're showing it now is because we want to get it designed and built and put in there. So, you know, I think we'll meet the city requirements. We will meet the city requirements. I don't think we will. But again, it's not, it's not necessarily for this project. It's for another project in the future.
I was here in 2015 when we approved those apartments. And if that has final approval, it has a design in that sewer, right?
I believe it does, yes.
I think that ought to be looked at.
But...
Because that's what, you know, people keep coming back and saying, well, we didn't, we didn't think of this, we didn't think about that. This is the same developer, so...
Yeah, it's in the same spot. I believe it's got the same design, but the problem is, again, we were, we didn't have this subdivision finished and it's, it's basically...
If this, if the apartments had been built, that sewer line would be in.
Correct.
What does it look like?
Yeah, it'd be in, be built.
Okay, could those two houses be built in there?
Yeah.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm positive. If the line was in, we could build those houses.
Yeah, it probably would have been less restrictive.
Yeah, it would have been way less restricted than it is now.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Because this requirement did not come up on that and then the easement would have just been in place and...
But those two houses would, you know, they would...
But the houses, as long as they stay outside of the easement, can be built. I mean, there's...
Yeah, we'll be able to build the houses and, and like I said, we're going to have to try to keep that, minimize that slope or that depth on the sewer line so that we can minimize that easement as much as possible so that we leave ourselves as much building area as possible there. And it may require another manhole or it may require something to be able to, to reduce the size of easement down as small as possible, but we're going to have to look at it again. But yes, there was a design for that sewer line in the past coming out of those apartments.
So, I think without, without the final design on this phase with the information that's here now, they will go through and, you know, with, with our approval to move forward, they will go through and do a final design. At that point, they'll take that to the city council. With that final design, I think they'll have a lot more information on what would be needed there. And if at that point, they wanted to request some type of variance per se from this ordinance that's being called out in the design standards, I suppose that could be looked at. I don't know that there's a whole lot for us to do at this point though, without a, a final design, other than, I mean, we can sit here and talk about it, but those, that's kind of my thoughts on it. I think that it, it can move forward and then the final design will have to be worked Any other thoughts? Well, if nothing else, I would entertain a motion.
Can we motion to approve it with, without the planter strip?
Mm-hmm.
In item 22? So, I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. If there's any discussion on the motion, otherwise, Aislinn, if you will call the vote.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Brennan?
No.
Is that a yes or a yes?
No.
Satterfield?
Yes, motion carries. And that concludes our meeting. Thank you.